And then, you know, also it's pretty important. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Any other questions, Tyler? All right, moving on to staff.
I just want to share with the board, I want to start by saying I'm extremely grateful that we've been able to do in-person instruction as much as we have this year. And I think it was great that we tried to make the accommodation for parents who are not comfortable sending their child to school by offering a virtual option. I know I've heard that the virtual option was just for one year, but just like we originally thought we were going to be closed for two weeks last year, who knows what the future is going to hold. So I want to share my experience about how it's been going trying to do both virtual and in-person instruction at the same time. Um, I feel like a person who can handle and deliver quite a bit, but the way things are going right now, I do not think I can mentally balance another year doing both. I don't feel that this is any reflection on the administration or any reflection on the, on the tool at all. It's just the reality of trying to manage those challenges. Um, in December, when everyone was virtual, I would be able to tailor my lesson regarding the lessons, what would work best over a screen. I could adjust activities, um, angles, presentation style, response files, and everything. In the classroom, several activities that we do in person don't work well over a screen, and some don't work at all. So every day I'm faced with a choice, do I do what is best for the needs of the students first in front of me? Or do I do what is best for the needs of the students first in front of the screen? Either way, I know one of those students are thinking that they have something else and not having the means to open that. Knowing that I have truly meeting the needs of all my learners is very troubling. Um, trying to do both in-person and virtual file naming, please, isn't just a use of setting up a camera to record my lessons. I have to set up which, which things to log up, login, upload, et cetera. And that takes time away from both students. Um, I have a webcam set up, pointing my communication board so people can see the board. I have a document camera set up so the students can see, you know, what I'm trying to teach them or their work. Um, but unfortunately, technology does not always cooperate. And while if that happens, I can contact the fly and make it work, but now I'm struggling with how do I get the attendance to the virtual students? Because I just had to deal with this sitting in a circle on the board set and that doesn't translate well. I tried including virtual students in my small and large groups, but my small group didn't have those, and that has not gone well for me either. Um, I definitely have to take my document camera from my communication board, set it up with my phone book, bring it over to the table where I'm going to work with the small group of students, and everything else I need for the lesson. When you have a big field, there's a lot of hands-on stuff, so there's a lot of material. Once that's set up, I have to present the lesson underneath document camera to the virtual student. Then I have to re-present the same lesson to the three or four students sitting in front of me, which is just frustrating for my part. Um, and I feel like teaching the same lesson twice while in front of the teacher, the same lesson twice, the student on the screen, I can't point to things, I can't cover up words. Like, you know, modify the steps for lessons, I really can't see what they're supposed to be. So in addition to teaching the same lesson twice in my small group, I'm also troubleshooting and trying to help get our mind through the test. And I try to manage all these students in the classroom who are six-year-olds and working independently. That's it, sure, yeah, and dealing with any behavior issues, and it's just creating a lot of stress and pressure on myself. Um, when it's a third material, while I try to have both sets of students do the exact same thing, every part is a lot of extra work. Um, it's not just as making an extra copy of some things. We do our project, um, being so busy with it for now, every part to be doing, you need to make sure of one of the reasons they're going to be. Any game we play, I have to make sure of all the teachers and centers, they have to have a reason at that. Um, and in the classroom, when my students are doing activities, I give them the activities, as we're getting ready to do it. The virtual students keep on doing their old ones. As they were struggling with organization and finding things, I had to make a multi-type of folder thing. Where at each cell set, what we're going to do for the week, in the order that we're going to teach it, so that they can have success with them. Doing it this way is to be more successful with virtual students, but it requires an extra one to two hours of time every week for my students. Or just those students in addition, to preference with my internal students as well. Um, and I'm doing this for every subject, every day, all day. So basically, by trying to balance the needs of both in-person and virtual students at the same time, I'm sure there is quality education, the same education. I feel like neither are truly getting everything that they need, which makes me feel like I can do it, even though I know I can do the best that I can, maybe in the situation, it's a find-out. Um, both the students, I feel like missing out on things, and I'm getting very frustrated in the process. Again, I'm very grateful that we've been in person as much as we have. I don't feel my struggles are any reflection on the school, the school board, the policies, anything, it's just a matter of, you know, 2020, the year that's terrible. Um, everyone is running in this process, and as they go, everyone is doing the best that they can, I just want to share my perspective in relation to the six-year-olds who can't read. That type of, and we project to send each other 20 to 30 minutes when maybe I have to run out of data. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Amber Scott, Tyler? Moving on, we'll go into administration. Amber?
Um, we noticed that everybody was in the PTO virtual family. Um, I just kind of sporadically talked to different A students, and all of them, and they were all very excited. I know I go over the most exciting part of the beginning of the mic church one, but that's a sort of corny, it can't be all yours. But I do appreciate that, because I know we're a little bit time putting into that and, and offer activities for the kids that, you know, usually weren't able to be here, so I truly appreciate that. And it was very nice too, because different groups were able to watch both of the events too, but it worked out good, so again, very much. Um, we've been, we mean, Julia, Lee, Danielle, and I, and we're back up. For getting some feedback for the teachers on our curriculum, the character strong and stuff. And overall, we've really got some really great feedback on that, and the benefits of adopting those. I wanted to share that with you guys, especially since you okay for those. I really appreciate that, and I think it's been really nice to be able to do some of the, especially in this day and age. Um, we've been some of the mental health issues, so thank you very much on the feedback, or get that feedback to you. Central, Brenda Jenkins worked with Central, they did a virtual biography, and I was able to actually, with our group, try to do what, um, the high school students were on the cameras. I tilted it around for our kids, and they asked all the questions. Um, and our group was two points away from winning. Um, they were, it was amazing, it was really, they were very excited, so I just wanted to share that. And I appreciate Brenda looking into that and giving that opportunity, again, some of those things that we need to do in person, so appreciate that. Um, we do have, I know we started in Kristen, and I'm just going to start back with, uh, third and fourth, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So I did about doing some other opportunities for kids, and we are also going to start New York comment, second, third, and fourth grade on different, or morning, actually, so they'll be coming in at the morning. So some other things that are up to ease for kids to be here. Um, or the fam coming up, um, so I was a prep with that and trying to figure out how this is going to work. Uh, you know, I shared that they cannot be get offsite, so I've been working with the virtual families on different kinds that I'll be able to have them come in. So probably all of April, I will be forward testing. Um, and just looking on observations, I know John and I both are with observations with our staff that unfortunately pulled the short straw, got to be valued for a year this year, so I feel like it's different. But, um, and at the level of CPG with everything too, so we're doing, we're going to make it through this much longer, so I think it's going pretty well. So, thank you.
Um, a few items, we, we talked a bit about this one, I was the federal money and, and kind of what's happening with S R two and S R three. We've just got word today on 90% of that S R two money, which is, um, we know we're getting about $164,000 dollars that's going to be coming through the federal one form now. There's a discussion about there's a remaining 10%, which was to be allocated for the, 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 the 40% of the districts, which are the, the low revenue districts of what's us. Sweetland, which is a central, I think, for the others in the area, Tennessee, but, but it could still be able to recruit some of that money, um, to that process. That's an interesting process where they're, they're based, it's based upon the amount of in-person instruction that takes place. So we just asked you about how they're going to do that, how they're going to put that up. Um, being ideas, most of the time is going to help us. Um, but there, there are some parts to it which, um, it looks like we may vary what they, and again, this is a greater student thing than for small people, but we might be penalized a little bit. Um, with, um, kind of, we've had a teacher who's been out there for a certain time guarantee, who would be instructed and be actually instructed to the students in class. And it's questionable whether or not we're going to allow it to count that at least the base deception, which is really frustrating, because that was part of the detailed plan in the first place. So that's why we, it took a lot of work to kind of make that work. So we'll be kind of moving that forward over the course of the, uh, next week and how that gets clarified. Uh, I think legislature passed a bill, there was talk during the virtual charter school, the open enrollment students. That a open enrollment student would not be able to access virtual instruction unless they were a part of a virtual charter or, uh, 21, 22, and that would be 100%. Uh, in those cases, 100% virtual experience. The bill that was passed, um, allowed it for 21, 22 for that, did not do an issue that open enrollment students would be able to do that. Um, I don't think it's going to be as big of an issue as what it looked like a few months ago, but, but it, it did pass that. I'm in discussion about legislative oversight in terms of the COVID fund and kind of where that's going to go. Uh, we've got four area school districts that are going to be having referendums coming up, two of them are doing operational referendos, that would be Randall and, uh, Triguloma. Uh, people with the, all the pretty board, you know, city is also doing an operational referendum, the social extension, they're writing, uh, uh, facility referendos that they're going to be doing on April 6th. Uh, April 6th is election day, so you can get out and go early if you get a chance. Um, I don't know, David's, uh, running out of polls. Um, so, um, you get out there and, and get out, vote when you get a chance, and, and that's all that happens in that.
Uh, people financial report, Trevor.
Are there any questions?
So I'd just had a question, just to kind of follow up on some that I asked before. Keeps getting the, uh, teachers, big teachers come up. Do you have like a shared drive setup, how and all of the stuff that we're buying this year for all to be able to utilize, or does it go to an individual teacher?
We have four, um, teachers, but some of the teachers are, have had, I think, that's years, so we are able to get that every person. But like the spring terms of social studies that we bought, there's tools that, um, set, um, sorry. Um, so like we did, uh, Little Thinkers for Science and Social Studies, and so those will go in there. The only problem with that is when it updates, like whoever bought it, so let's say they add like a new unit to like the Little Thinker Science. The person who bought it will be able to see that update, so it won't necessarily go into the shared drive. Does that make sense? Um, so I know Jenny had most of those, so when she sees an update, that would have to be sure we put that piece into like the, the social study. So I think we have the social study, there's a, there's a, yeah, it's closely that, uh, such that it's tied to the whole group of them.
Would it be beneficial just on the accounting side or on the financial system side to get a, if you're looking for something?
I'm just, I guess, no, I'm just trying to figure out if, if, you know, I'm all through doing whatever I need to do to provide the teachers with the tools that need to be successful. Yes, I would understand if we're purchasing them, is there a special base where it would be shared among staff, right? So, so it doesn't belong to, you know, the sixth grade teacher, so that all of our staff would have access to that teacher's grade teacher's document. That's, that's really what I was asking for, not necessarily what we're spending on, because I support spend, just.
Right, understood.
Yeah.
So what, the teacher, I'm just, I don't know, I'm not questioning why you would ask, I just don't understand why the teachers would need to see.
That's, but it's, so teacher's grade teachers is lessons, things like that, as I understand it, is.
Yeah, so if we cause through our, how the understanding is a distributed share. So, yeah, prior to this, like if a teacher, um, has their own account and they're using their money, then, but I mean, most of them sharing.
Their budget.
Happy.
So we just, thank you so much. When you said their money, did you mean they have money budgeted per student?
They, yeah, they can use, I know some teachers that use like a classroom class to buy one, and I know obviously, I know that in the past. So when, when we went virtual last school year, they opened it up to the schools.
Okay.
For, and we had a school account so that, and there were so many licensures that we could buy things. So again, like we bought a whole bunch of those free things for our older groups and things like that. So once that started, kind of now getting more of an accounting fund.
Okay. When you mentioned the teachers spend their own money, do they get reimbursed?
They did, yeah, fine.
And it was just $140, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
There's something you have to take into consideration when you have about uploading them, when you buy a license for something, obviously, you're going to have to assume that it belongs to the, by. That relic, so you could relate it to licenses for the teachers, you kind of have to share that, we're sharing them on the teachers, whether it's the teachers or not. You just have to be careful with the ability that, oh, I bought this from a teacher, and I share it with a 20 teacher, so just.
Any other questions?
I'm in motion, we approve the financial report as presented.
A second.
All of them, babe?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We still can, or, or, do you have a thumbs up or a thumbs down for getting that held up? All right, aye, five ayes, most of them approved. Uh, open, 6.1, 2021, 2022, staffing plan.
Um, in your work packet, I know I already shared, I know the staffing plan without keys on it. Um, but I put names so that you could kind of see how the shuffling happened and where some of those openings are. So, um, I found that you can't share it, but I'll see that a lot, just kind of watch, be afraid of what you want to hear all day for everybody else. So, um, so we talked about 4K when we shared last board, that I would stay one teacher at a time, still morning and an afternoon currently. Right now, we have 32 students on our board business for next year, so that's pretty good at this time of year to have that number, because we always will gain, you know, possibly up to 10 more. So I think we've done a, a great job, like, I know first of all, I kind of like stop parents, but they come in to pick up orders, say, let me see, what is the one, and they're like, hey, I put you on the list. So, um, I'm, I'm pretty happy with this, and you do, I think we won't see this big rush of kids we didn't have, so, um. And then in the garden, we're looking at with the small 4K group that we have right now moving up, that we would only need two teachers. So that is a change for this year, because right now we got three. So that would cause the first grade to be three next year, which is currently one, so you kind of see how this happens every year. Second grade, we're moving out two sections of first grade, so second grade will stay two. Third grade is where we talked about, um, currently we have three second grade teachers right now, and we got talked about the beginning of the year, we changed that. To make the class larger, a bit smaller, that's the class I'm a little bit worried about, because you're going to look at pretty good class sizes if we don't go two, three sections in third grade. So that is something that we can talk about. Fourth grade will become the two, but we're moving up only to third grade. Um, fifth, starting at fifth and up, we talk about homerooms, but you have, remember that's where they get more academic specific. So fifth grade, we'll be three, sixth grade, two, and then seventh and eighth grade are our two largest classes, those will be three and three. Um, our RTI position that you approved, we did open it up to internal staff. We had three interested individuals and ended up talking to two, but one dropped out. So we have currently offered that position to Marlene, um, who said she didn't have much to, any time to put on it at all. That he's very, um, interested in the position, she had thought, well, um, when the position was open before, and just didn't want to move at that time. Um, she does get her reading specialist sessions too, so that would be extremely helpful. So we would like to, um, have Marlene take the new RTI position, so that would be, would be Kristin here and I'll speak Marlene. Which then I will go backwards, which causes kind of our, um, staffing plan. So at this time, uh, we'd like to move Shelley Henderson to 4K, she has, um, daycare experience. Um, she has the licensure for it, um, talked with her a lot about it, and she's very interested in that. Um, because she is very, as she said, adult-oriented, um, so she would move to 4K kindergarten, and she's currently in kindergarten. The, that works because Shelley will be coming back, so kindergarten would be Shelley and Lori. And then first grade, we need three in first grade, so right now we currently just have Jenny and Sarah, so that would open up, um, an opening there. Second grade, we just need two for next year, so Jill and Deb will stay there. Third grade, um, Larry and Pete, and I know we had talked about, and most, pretty much all of you said, you would agree that you think that that third grade should possibly go to three, just to keep the class size is smaller. Especially with second grade kind of missing out a lot of very important, especially reading instruction. Um, if we do that, that is also going to open up, uh, a higher position. Fourth grade, just two, so that'll be Kristen, Delarue, Craig Slater. Fifth grade, Caleb, Philip will move up to fifth grade, Hannah Herman will be coming back from virtual to go there, and Steve Putner. Sixth grade will be Christina Rasmussen and Katie Coats. Seventh grade will be Renee White, Brenda Jenkins, Kristen Henderson, and then eighth grade will be three Kristen, Jen, and Stacy and Jason Shawway. Um, as far as our special areas, I don't see any changes there. Um, obviously, I have worked out each schedule, but when you look at section wise, um, how many homerooms, we definitely will need all of the special teachers that we currently have. Um, and we'll be looking at that music position when I start to look at scheduling and what that's going to look like for a person in that staff, I guess you would say. Um, because we already did pick up some of the music classes this year. And then we have talked about special ed, adding a, um, another special ed teacher. So if you look on the staffing plan where I put the three higher, those will be, obviously, areas that you would have to be okay with for intercourse. Do you have any questions on any of that?
It's, you outlined it pretty well.
I think you're going to press my key later.
Yes. Yes.
Adam, you want to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two staffing plan?
All second.
Sure, second, all of them, favorite, aye?
Aye.
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 First, that thumbs up, aye, aye, five ayes, motion approved. Thank you. Um, thanks for that. Well, we have the six point two, you're hearing a couple.
Uh, we had talked a bit last month about looking at, whatever touch board, touch board, some of it here. Um, really an easy tool to use if we wanted to, if we do it, there's a code you type in, if all of us wanted to feel that, while it's like this to it, be able to share it, you could all do that, without any error. Um, it's just a, a, a great tool to use. Um, we talked about it a couple of things, one thing was to talk about one, uh, extended maintenance over there, but what for? So, uh, the credit pool was a three year, um, three year one, you can pick up an additional five years for two hundred and forty three dollars, about as much as the machine. Um, and within the, the, I'm not sure, call this, looks, Dave, in terms of, of kind of, um, if, if it's something that, that's cost effective at that point, but, um, the, um, talked about, um, all the, the touch sensitive screens, which go for um, approximately thirty four hundred dollars. The, uh, if you were to go with a non-touch sensitive screen, you'd be looking at approximately fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars for, for those types of screens. Talked with, with this Casper, that, the, um, person that, that we're working with through Tierney. Um, he said schools are all open, the high schools in the lead for going with stop touch sensitive. Um, what he sees primarily is that, if you're way, there's most, most districts are using a touch sensitive screen for, for both classes. Um, we live on the road and primarily non-touch sensitive screens in that class, which was when they did their last referendum. Um, so there's a lot of, um, ways that we can go in that direction. I guess it seems a lot that hitting it on the really right. Over there. Um. So, I'm, I'm just thinking, we have four and the rolling sheet, I think. Um, just in general, looking at, what's matter, our regular teaching classroom, where we've got twenty kids in the classroom. Uh, sitting back away from the screen, having that accessibility, having a big screen, having a, a touch sensitive screen, it's certainly something that, that I think would be I would pretty have to be just rest in motion. Um, what we are, in our classroom, where we would, um, a split classroom, some of our, uh, our diet type classrooms were supposed to be more um, uh, typically a small group type here, uh, we can maybe go a little bit smaller more, maybe, uh, depending on the grade level, creativity, what is a touch sensitive screen or a not touch sensitive screen, depending on that activity, in terms of where we're at. Um, but I, I think we've got, um, now we've got our older board, we've got some boards which are on a day, every day. We've got some boards which are probably not a day, hour, a month. So we've got some, uh, a little bit better shit, hard, if we need to set enough for you to take the best of the best, if we kind of work our way through this. Um, so, I, you know, we've got a little bit of time before we need to make the decision, but, um, just count us a little bit to that, where we're at. Uh, Chris, Chris, we're speaking here on the nineteenth, with the, uh, trainee, and we're going to touch board. Um, if anybody for the board would like to sit in on a little, pitch in on a, a Google call, pitch in. Um, ask questions, Dave, so ask, we have to do that. I can go as well. And, um, be able to shoot some questions, they have, in terms of, of, of ideas out there, we, we work with, kind of district, and a lot of this provider in the state. Um, and can really provide us with some ideas that have been, I'll do a free spell, until we actually pick it to the classroom. And, um, have, it's just bring it up.
Um, question, the non-touch screens, how does the mouse or whatever peripheral you're using to work around having a non-touch screen? Where, where does that, what does that, which is the question?
So the mouse or?
Well, we talked about the option of having touchscreens and non-touch monitors. I assume the touchscreen, they can walk up and touch them. It's, it's not a touch monitor, then is it a mouse that's attached to it?
Yeah, it's like operating off of your.
You're just being using it, your screen, your.
Off of your device.
To mirror off or how, whatever they call it, just like your.
Right, I think it's a presentation device when the teacher walks up, hits a button on the actual screen itself.
Yeah.
So that, the, the actual screen isn't the touchscreen part, it's.
For, on this one, it is the touch, yeah, the screen itself.
So it's different.
On the non-touch.
On the non-touch, yes, based on the device.
So, just for understanding, it's a non-touch device. Would our teachers be stuck behind their computer instead of in front of?
You teach it the laptop in front of them. It's not like they're stuck at their desk, they can move the laptops.
Chromebook links to it and everything else?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay, there's not a workbook in each of the rooms, or they don't have one available to them?
We have, they have some, but they wouldn't be able to use it to use their active inside of the classroom. They would be able to do a lot of homework to use there, actually, they would have it, having to do that.
Cause you can't download.
Okay.
But to keep in mind, in his packet notes, John wrote that we have to order them by May first.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're gonna have, we're gonna be right in the middle of all the summer demands. So we have, just because the, just to say the nineteenth is really close to our, you know, April board meeting, we just, and our April board meeting is really close to the May first, so I just want to keep putting it off until, you know, I don't want something to happen and us miss that May first deadline. Then we'll be right in the middle of, you know, who will get them.
Well, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars, we'll have to.
Right, and do we have quotes, different?
What more?
I think they're both for the same thing, for something else that is.
Yeah, you have a, uh, then just to, yeah, so a hundred thousand, I mean, it's required, right?
Uh, it's double check of what our number is, but I believe we would.
Yeah, I think over like twenty five thousand, had to get three quotes.
Um, I think it's a lot where we have to record.
Right.
Uh, I can get that.
Okay, cause I think everyone who sells office supplies, jump at, to bid on this.
Yeah.
But sometimes too, you have to make sure that those bids are, we're requesting apples to apples too.
Yeah.
Well, and we don't want to waste our time and theirs on stuff that is not the same.
Yeah, the beauty with the clever touch is that it works with whichever, the, you know, it, it works with your Prodigy, your Doc, or it works with your smart software. Um, you know, so, so it, it really.
I'm just saying, in the bid notice, we'd have to make sure that they have to, you know, quote us, be very specific on what they're quoting us, otherwise we don't want to.
First, we have chat.
So, so one question I would have to, obviously, as we talk about this, is, we just saw with Andrea's staffing plan for your school, there's always a lot of moving and shuffling. And then how would you let that be decided? Teacher gets shuffled from level to level, if they're used to using the touchboard at all, so they don't have one, and they make accommodations and switch things around, or again, just throwing things off, because I, I would assume that you guys aren't so hard to get your plans and things like that. Use the tools that are accessible to you, and all of a sudden, if that tool is gone, it could change the way you operate the teacher.
You've been applying any of the non-touch screen that would likely need to go with those activities, which would not be using best of a software.
In fact, when we were looking at personal devices or for student devices, and we went with ideas for the primary grades because our kindergarten through third grade, so that they could be able to use the touch screen. The Chromebooks initially got up until recently didn't have touch screens. So that was reserved after the fourth grade. So.
First, that comment was, um, be concerned of all staff who want touch and really use it, get it. They don't, or don't use touch and don't buy it. So I would, I would give you that. So, if you're more than, you have competitive quotes, in terms of our item.
We need three.
Well, we were given one.
Right.
We did. Sorry, but, um, to just, I've, it's also first understand that we're looking at preferring all touch, all no touch, or if partial touch, what raise or give touch, we understand what you were thinking. So, sure. And then we'll be in a position to definitely make a decision, angle.
All right, I'm moving on to twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, by subject. Um, with the budget update, we're, we're gonna have a lot more information next month. We're really waiting on um, the joint planning meeting, which is gonna take, start taking place next week. You should have a much better idea on the ESSR fund as of our April meeting. We're going to have our insurance quotes for, uh, our dental and, or renewal, rather, for dental and health. What should be coming through, and we've got our staffing plan in place. So as of right now, it's, we're pretty much standard full for where we're at, hoping to get some information from the state in terms of what's happening there. Um, so we'll get a plus bigger, look after the, the budget next month. Uh, we're gonna have a whole lot of information that's coming in over the next four weeks.
Yeah, any question? Okay, a question, we've got six point four, COVID reopening plan update.
Uh, so, so, let's say our COVID reopening plan. So before we do that, just to take a quick peek. Um, this is the hybrid model. This is kind of, uh, uh, and this is, wait, two, three, twenty two, it's March twentieth of twenty twenty. And then following through over the course of month by month, kind of what's happened with Pason. When you see a little bump, often it is after, um, a holiday, so for instance, over here at six twenty two, and we have a bump here, this is when the Fourth of July holiday came in. Uh, we had, our school, we got into the holidays here, we, uh, that mid-November time is when things really, really, um, uh, got, got high throughout, not only throughout the staff, but, but throughout, uh, the nation. Um, and it's really cut that down very nicely, which is great to see. Um, so there's concerns right now about possibly after the spring bake season, if those tend to be C and C bumping up again. But when you see that, this is now basically an entire year, to kind of see what's happened over the course of the year. Um, we're a lot less than we were not very long ago. So if we turn to look at a reopening plan, and just some things that, that we talked about taking baby steps, but we want to take some steps towards, towards reopening. For special classes, what we've been doing is having the special teachers come to the classroom, having the students stay in that room. Um, and there's, such that the special teachers have, have been the travelers, the students. What we'd like to do is, uh, with that, we're having the students move to the special classroom. They would still go as a cohort group, but we have them go to that room to be able to pack down the classes in between. Uh, we go prepare, we maintain the cohort group, we allow the special teacher a little bit more flexibility, where they can step up in their own classroom to do lessons. Versus, um, having them, uh, taking, kind of, kind of them along. Um, we take a look at our fifth through eighth grade classrooms, similar to, you know, the specials, we've been having the uh, the, the teachers have been rotating to the classrooms, the students have essentially stayed in that same classroom throughout the day. What we'd like to do is, and now the special classes, is have the, have the those cohorts go as a group to the different classrooms, they would stay as that group, but we would have them go to that other classroom. So we're getting one step closer to, um, a more normal environment. Um, have not done anything in terms of, we last, um, in January, we had, we had made the updates in terms of um, having early release days at this time, point, this is kind of where we're at, we've got two early release days scheduled, all the rest of the year, April, fall, and on May, May third. Um, the board's interested and has some interest in doing something with it, we certainly intend. Um, but, you know, those are the two things that's coming up. Uh, consistent grade camp and field trips. At this point, we would recommend not having grade level field trips due to the travel times, the accessing facilities outside of our area. However, the consistent camp trip, the camp wonderland is, is essentially within the school district. Um, even within that, even with the bus traffic, or taking a bus through the, the camp, we could, um, we can still allow the parents to, to transport their own kids. What we'd like to do is take a look to see if we can have a two-day base camp, not have a overnight stay, but have a part of a, of a two-day camp experience, we'd like to have for the kids. And also utilize the camp wonderland, they typically use theirs in the fall, than the trip like that. But they're also doing a, a, a couple of the camp wonderland experience, and we want to, uh, uh, do something, do something very similar to what, what your whole city is doing.
Okay, we got to keep them.
Sure.
Well, I talked to camp already to see if this is something they're going to be willing to do, and what are their, what's their protocol and safety and, and everything, and um, try to maintain all of the activities that the kids still, that do, the only thing we're gonna just miss is literally sleeping in the, the bunk. Uh, because they'll still do the night hike for us, so we'd be coming back, you know, pretty late at night, but staying the whole day. Um, so we're actually have a meeting set up tomorrow to talk with the camp director to just kind of over what one of these activities look like as far as rotating, um, and filling up the whole day. So you, I, I put kind of a thought um, whereas what the candle looks like, but obviously, we still need to do Kristen and Jason, and then talk with them tomorrow, so.
Um.
Campfire, how late will it go?
Till night, yeah.
Till night, so there would be campfire.
Yep.
I can, we provided.
We still want to do the food, we talked to them about that, they said they, they maintain, like, they will. Yeah, so you know, usually it's like you're all crowded on one table, and they talk about that spread out, and they maintain the whole of this, this and stuff.
Was there a pool there too? I can't remember.
Yeah.
That would be.
And that is for very fine, so that would be, so you want to talk to them tomorrow, like, what would that look like, where we rotate, you know, the core, get cool on it. Um, so those are all the, of particulars, like my husband's about to model. They did, there's a lot of, like, other activities, you'd see on there, like recess time, because they can have, um, that all, it's, I mean. Gaga, so, yeah, they presented, they were trying to, you know, have activities, like, to, to, to.
The, the pool might be pushing, because there's no opportunity for clothing change and.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, they would end up keeping it.
Yeah.
I'm sure they have.
Pool, they were like, oh, we can open up other different activities in it, and have, it's been, um, maybe, some, you can use the pool, and we can't, so um, just to try to, you know, have a lot of things scheduled, so it's still a fun experience and all that activities they do, so. I will definitely share with you that actual, I can very well talk to them.
Do you have to make a decision on that to me? Move on.
Are they going to do the whole thing, or are you going to do one, like, one?
Well, why don't I go through the, let me kind of go back to what I, I mean, after that. Um, the graduation of field days, we're, at a, we've got a smaller, we've got a smaller fourth day, um, this week. Do you think that we could do any person graduation, have some precautions in place? Um, we may need to take a look at what the family members could be limited. Um, on health protocols, and we think we can do that. We would like to, rather than having all the kids in the gym for a virtual awards day, or for awards day, we'd like to do that as a virtual awards day. Um, we also think we can do field day activities, we're gonna be outside, somewhere, uh, some of the other activity where we're, we're outside, we, we've got some control over basic protocol that we can have in, in place. Um, we feel like, we, we're comfortable doing that. In terms of facilities, and we reckon allowing any of the outdoor facilities to be used by outdoor groups, but it's not important to what they do at this time. Uh, we could take a look at that on a monthly basis. Um, we've been having two in-house. Um, we've been having two in-house substitutes, it's been really helpful, um, almost every day, we got a few people who are out, and to be able to use them everywhere. Classrooms, um, and A roles, um, in the office, service, name it, um, it's been an awful lot. It's also really hard to secure some people at this point, um, because isn't that outside pool that's out to address the draft line? So, you know, we would really like to continue doing that. Um, also, if no additional staff allows it, to help with the small group work during fall exam testing, um, at the end of the season as the board is made. Um, we would regularly participate in the associate athletic conference spring sports seasons, uh, the track, intended to be thoughtful. We're gonna have a, a preliminary meeting tomorrow, taking a look at those sports. Um, and in terms of how many people are interested, I think most if not all will be interested in playing. So, um, we think we're gonna be able to do both sports seasons during the spring. Um, and that, at this point, we'd recommend, if, if any year were weak, then the length of the season segment condensed. Um, we would look at not charging student that public fees. Um, it's a, it's a, often we put this down with broad readers for those that are familiar with lunch, all of it is serving, lunch initiative. So, um, certainly something that we think that, that maybe something that we can do, um, in first practice day.
I know this isn't quite on your list, but the, um, free and reduce, that's been extended till the end of September, correct?
For us, it's
Or the lunches, I mean, are free until the end of September?
For us, I believe it's through the end of June, right, Christo?
Okay. Okay.
So do we wanna take these one at a time? I listen for one at a time. Sure, so any questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, are we, any questions for rotation of cohorts in the eighth grade class?
None at this time.
Okay, and I'm watching for a change inside. Uh, any, or, I'm watching for twenty-one, twenty-six calendar day, so that's amazing.
I, I'm getting lost in the, I was just gonna look, do you, have you heard, um, John or Andrea, like, do you feel, does the staff think that they would benefit from another one or two early release? I mean, because that's what, we added a couple from January till spring break. Do we, I mean, we're only talking to a little over two months left, but does, and we already have two in there. Has there been any type of talk that it would be beneficial? And I, like I said, I'm kind of lost in here, I'm trying to find the current. That's sixty-five pages, I'm trying to find a, a current calendar. Thanks.
Um, I don't want to speak for them, but make sure that I know that they appreciated the half fees and have not scheduled anything on those activities, like, in the past. We would have a happy, that, 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 on that, um, and I know, like, Christine saying, you just put that, so it happens in your time, um.
What about on the parent's side, have you guys had any, heard any good or bad from the parent's side? I haven't, oh, there's too many, because, I mean, I have to find, here, you know, I like have to make arrangements for pickup or whatever.
I, I haven't heard that, no. But, but especially in other districts, they're just getting from four days a week to five days a week. And that's been terrible.
Yeah. Okay.
We have parents here. As a parent, I think it has helped the teachers get to the end of the year, and they give up the power.
And you don't have a time to make comments.
Yeah, they like said it now, through the end of the year, plenty here to plan for us, and just working out as well.
Well, and, but because of where the ones are, I mean, I just, because of where the ones that are already scheduled are, I don't know where you would put them. So I don't, I don't know what that would be. I just, it's just something to consider that, because, I mean, we did add the ones in January and February, I don't know if we. Oh, yeah, that's right, too, we did bring it up last year, or I mean, that's meeting, but Right, yeah, right. Would that change our hours? We touched on it last month, but I don't think we really talked about it.
We, we should, we should still be fine on ours. Um, in terms of, of ours, the construction, we should still be fine.
With the talk of, um, variance of the start date of the year, for next year?
And, yeah, yeah, we'll get to that in a little bit, you know, there's a, uh, uh, yeah, in terms of, on that early release time, uh, we, we're looking at two and a half hours each day, so the grand, four of it, you know, three of them essentially makes up a half hour, or whatever.
That, I mean, I just had, I just didn't know if we wanted to.
No, we're looking at the calendar, if, you know, if, if we were looking at something, perhaps one more, um, yeah, so maybe towards end of May. Um, which is, are the calendar south? Uh.
I mean, because there's already one, the twelve, and then the third, right? So I don't know if, like, just by adding just the seventeenth, would that help, you know, like alleviate some stress, get some help with some prep? I don't know.
We'll have to future figure here.
That's worth that idea. Well, that's, yeah, it's not why we did it, kind of in the first place, because we weren't doing reduced days.
Yeah.
Just that extend the school year?
That he just said, no.
Yeah.
There would only be two and a half hours, because we're only adding one.
One more day, right? Oh, it's just one more.
One more two and a half hour, that's not accounted for.
Okay, come down to the hour.
So what day would be?
Well, we want, we want three, two, because we have the twelve, then we would go to two, four weeks, and then the third.
So we are thinking
You would only go for one week, and then you do seventeen, four, yeah, twenty-four, because we already have it on the thirty first.
Right.
Yeah, I, I suppose this calendar for that big reason.
Yeah, it just took me a minute to find it, is what I was having. Yep. So.
Might have to say the seventeenth, in the middle of the month, yes?
Yeah.
Any other questions on the, uh, calendar day? All right, in the fifth and sixth grade, uh, uh, Camp Wonderland trip, uh, they're a go, and no one but field trip though.
I'm okay.
Yep, me too.
Just as long as we're in order.
Bert's okay with it, okay? Uh, graduation field day.
Okay.
Okay with that. Bert's okay with that? Uh, facilities, allowing outdoor facilities, but still returning in for years.
I'm okay with it, and to John's point, I think we should just make sure it's on the agenda monthly at this point in time, as, as, as it continues to evolve.
Okay. Um, and then recommending that we maintain the two daily even house substitutes for the end of the year.
Okay.
No issues.
Good.
Um, recommended we participate in the track and possibly softball, athletic, for the spring. Okay, agreed. And then recommending that we don't charge student athletic fee for the, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two year.
For the twenty-one.
Well, you have your twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, should be twenty.
Okay, for, for the remainder of this school year, right?
I said, yes.
And I'm gonna be motioning to accept the COVID, uh, reopen plan, under the one modification that we had in my baseline case, this is probably what we say.
I will second that motion.
My second, all of you favor?
Aye.
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 Bert is an aye, I'm an aye, mine aye, is approved. Thank you for that, I think. Um, six point five, twenty twenty-one's personal based program.
So for summer school, we are looking at, um, we're looking at July twelfth and August fifth. There's been a lot of discussion about summer school. Because we prefer summer school after the, uh, uh, Fourth of July, we're a little bit later in the year as we do that. Um, I, I focus on getting more students involved in, in summer school, not necessarily having more days. Uh, and we're gonna go to August fifth, and then we'll look if we can start like December first, or, you know, if, if we ever look at starting a little bit earlier to that. Um, the focus would, would be trying to find, and encourage more kids to be a part of our instructional pieces to, uh, jump track activity. Andrea, I wonder if you'd wanna add to that?
Yeah, hopefully, I know a lot of schools are doing like an early summer school, and they're doing kind of like we used to do the jump start off, but they're not kind of having, later, we've always kind of encompassed the jump start in that same time. Um, so hopefully, we can get the staff that we can recommend jump start to a lot more students, kind of limited in the past, just not having a lot of say. So I'm hoping that, um, I know Danielle, I'll lie to you here, she has other things to say, but instead of doing separate, because we also wait already, you know, obviously we wanted to encompass the jump start, so nineteen days of jump start, and the last we did two weeks of jump start. So it would be more, so. I'm gonna try and get Danielle on. Yeah, we can, we get it all, we get it mapped, or we'll send out people, staff, we'll, people outside too, so that we can get a lot of teachers. Is there Danielle?
John, one of the things in the board pack was that you were gonna talk to other areas, schools about, uh, Cheryl, Karen, Ashley?
Yeah. So I've only got, um, for just two of the, two of the, they're just picking that up during break. So I can pre-prepare that if we get an eight ball, so they can more free.
I don't want to sound in here.
Yeah, right.
No, no, on the screen. Left of the, yeah.
Danielle, burn out.
Okay, Danielle, do you have anything to add?
No, they covered it pretty well.
Okay.
Now we can hear Bert, though.
Yeah, we hear Bert.
Can I just understand, like, from a character perspective?
Great.
That actually makes it more difficult for childcare, because you're not on the front end or the back end. So like, to get childcare for, let's say, three weeks in June, and that, because I do support the homeschool program for my kids, then to not have it for three weeks, and then to try to get them back in a program for three weeks. I just would like to understand why you would do it in the middle, because I know two years ago it was in August, right?
Yeah, well, the jump start on its own, we always, we used to do, we used to do summer school like a week after school got out. And then we would come like the second week of August and do like a jump start, and we had those two separate. And then we ended up moving it, we had difficulty in getting staff to wanna do both.
Yeah.
Because we kind of had the same staff that would do both. So then we moved it to after that July, because that, when we did it in June, then we got July off and, but July fourth. So then we went, decided to go after the July, and run it through August, give the kids like a two-week break, and then come back. Um, just so they kind of had a break before, and then they had a break after, but I understand your point too. We were trying to think of it based, like, not going right into summer school, and then having this huge break before school started. We saw it was really hard to get them back in the swing of things that they were on. And we have a pretty good, pretty big summer school group, um, so we were kind of trying to like give a little break before and a little break after, just mentally for kids and the teachers.
Yeah, definitely the teachers, the teachers that I spoke to, who taught summer school for us last year, um, kind of really were in support of the dates that we were looking at for this year, for that exact same reason. It gives, especially after this year, the stressors of this year, it kind of gives a nice break before summer school starts. Um, also, on the tail end, it's kind of a little closer to school starting, so it's a nice, if they wanna stay and work in their room after summer school, or kind of tack on some of those, um, beginning of the year things, if they're, they're teaching summer school as well, so.
Teachers come back for in-service the twenty-third of August, so that's another, like, they always come back a week before the kids are here, so to try and give them a break too. Otherwise, we were running right up, we were like August nineteenth for a while, and like the teachers would have four days off, and then it was in-service. So, yeah, just as a parent like that, with this year, I mean, from doing summer school, because the fine the child support, turn them off for a month, then turn them back on. Yeah.
But you want to, uh, go with the summer school program, or do you want to do while we play? You said possible.
Yeah, if, if there was any interest in, in doing anything different in terms of dates, um, this is what, kind of what our thought is, is to do it, and really focus on getting numbers of students at home versus expanding the number of total dates, is what we're looking for.
So we could just approve in general?
Yeah, just approve in general, and we can go with that.
Thank you, Bush. Here are summer schools for the summer of twenty twenty-one, as presented in the meeting. I will say.
My second, all of you favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, we heard you, Bert. Uh, five ayes, motion is approved. Thank you, moving on to six point six, let's go to the athletic conference agreement.
Well, um, I, I worked a bit with, um, the Union Grove folks, um, get, put together what is essentially a balanced budget, and then kind of defining what it is that is, um, that the roles of those co-commissioner positions. Um, essentially what we do is we end up taking the number of, the amount of expenditures over the course of the year, divide the costs up between twelve districts. And cost ends up being in the neighborhood, depending on the year, um, roughly nine hundred dollars for the associate conference costs, that we do that. Um, Union Grove serves as the, um, fiscal agent for it, so their auditors end up reviewing that as a part of, of their audit cost.
So this budget they presented is only for like the next two months, actually?
So it's essentially the twenty, again, it's a, it's a twenty twenty-one budget for the year. Much of the work that's done, the scheduling pieces, the securing of the, um, uh, track facilities, working on, uh, the dates, working around holidays, kind of teacher conferences, most stuff, is done for the next school year. So the work that they do now is largely working on twenty-one, twenty-two stuff. They're, they're essentially always working towards the next year. And which, which makes it, as we took a look at those positions, because they're doing work for that next year, we didn't feel like it was appropriate to pro Rachel's role, but rather to go ahead and go with it, yeah, and, and continue with the work, assuming that next year would be normal, um, and, uh, and go onward and upward with, with the scheduling implied for the next season. If we're not interested in participating, we have the option to go the route of, you become the Notre Dame of the, uh, of the area of Penosha County, and we can become an independent, not be a part of the conference. We can let the schedule be independently, and, um, and look to not be affiliated anymore, um.
I don't have a problem with being affiliated with the conference, but I just, and I, I do have to say, I apologize that you have to be the messenger to whoever you have to back to, because since I've been on this board, I have been very disappointed about unprofessional with everything that they have presented to us, with our typos, errors, dates, and strong people, and I, I was disappointed, for example, the budget here, if you total those, those expenditures in that column, they do not total eleven zero ninety-three. They total eleven two ninety-three. I know it's only two hundred dollars, but my accounting brain doesn't work that way, it's two hundred dollars off, so that they have to go ask for this. You know, so then that goes and divide out to two, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars per pool, it's something else. Um, and then like I said, the date, so I do, I apologize that you had to work with, I'm just a bit disappointed, you know, and but on the other side of things, for kids, I wouldn't want to pull away from that, because it is, you know, I would, you know, having got through it myself with my son, I'd welcome to participate in the board to play the other schools, their, their team. I'm just disappointed that it's eleven thousand. And I'm just working my opinion that it's just, it seems like And I'm just working my opinion that it's just, it seems like every time we talk about this conference, that there's something wrong with the form or the contract or the budget.
Uh, Sue is Sue is hip me for saying this, but I I wouldn't mind us being the fiscal agent going forward. Um, you know, yeah.
A hundred dollars to.
A hundred dollars to a lot.
School district.
Well, I mean, this is what, I mean, they did, I mean, when you look at it, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars is very reasonable for how many sports they do.
Right.
I mean, but it's just, I'm just disappointed, and I'm just putting it out there that I'm just disappointed as a way of handling it. It seems like every time something's wrong.
Well, also that's up to others, kind of, if they're making mistakes here, or are they making mistakes in your department, or like?
Yeah. And I mean, I do appreciate the time that it took in there to present a better understanding of the role that the position, of what they do, I do appreciate presenting that, because there's about that, so I thank you for having that. So, but, I mean, if you want.
So what's the breakdown of the time?
So.
With the correct.
Yeah, so it just needs to, yeah, just.
John, do you think you have any coaches that you need to secure?
Could be nine forty-one, eight.
The meetings are largely done with the district administrators, um, rather than with the coach. So matter of fact, we've got one tomorrow to talk about whether or not we're gonna be able to do uh, the the track and stuff, which I think, I think is gonna be a goal, and I think everyone's gonna participate. So typically, they would have a, they, at the beginning of the year, they would have one, prior to basketball, they would have one.
So August, September, I get it according to what they outlined, right? So I guess that's the only enough question is, look at what they put into these. Did they really plan for one one two, or is a lot of this stuff?
Um, a lot of it is us getting the calendars to them, and then they kind of work to work for more calendars.
So this appears the remainder of this school year. So when will we get to know the next year?
I'll find out, we might find out.
Is that in the following year?
Yeah, we should know, we should have something before the end of this school year for next year.
Why did they take it till now? Is that the COVID, or?
We got, we put them back in August, because they had no.
I understand that, but can you reject? This isn't new, I mean, what's new to the conference?
No.
Is this every year that, and what have we done in the past?
They they for years and years and years operated out of the checkbook and made a treasure, made a treasures report, um, at the end of the year, and essentially didn't do it.
I had it, I had it.
They they did the same, yeah.
So since we know the the amount for school is gonna be off, I make a motion that they accept the, uh, what's also left by athletic conference agreement for the amount, not to exceed nine hundred and fifty dollars for twenty twenty twenty-one school year. If there's any other little issue that I wanna, if like it's approved an amount for, that'll.
So we're just being, we're.
Right, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, that's our portion.
Yeah.
I think it was ten thousand.
Eleven thousand, oh, eleven thousand tonight. I need a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Cheryl, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, motion is approved. Moving on to new business, seven point one, DPI waiver update, early year start date.
So we put this on the agenda just for discussion purposes, to see if there would be any interest in looking at it, and if not, we just continue onward and upward with what we're doing. But there's been a lot of talk in the state, uh, with the focus being on learning loss slash disruption. Many districts in the state are looking at an earlier start to the year to try and get all of their kids back at an earlier date, with the idea that from an equity standpoint, the most equitable thing that you can do is to get all the kids back rather than certain groups back. And perhaps start a few days early, you would look to, um, you know, maybe adjust your calendar and shorten it up on the on the bad side. Um, one large district is looking at utilizing lesser funds, they're literally adding a couple of days of these days to, um, expand that. If you take a look at where our calendar falls, you know, we have a, our first day of school is scheduled for September one, which is Wednesday. Um, we have never been, we've, we've always utilized September one, or if September one falls on that weekend, we've been the third or the fourth, something along those lines, in terms of a special date. Um, don't know if there'd be any advantage to doing it or not. Um, I I spent fourteen years in Illinois, and the school improvement plan, one of the things that when a school was always struggling, one of the first things they did was set school earlier, because it would give you more face-to-face days prior to standardized testing. Um, and then less days after that, which which would be less intense instructional. Um, okay, we just wanted to put it on there from in our area, um, there is no one in our area that currently is planning on doing that. Um, but it has been, there's been a lot of buzz in the state, and just wanted to mention it, bring it up. Thoughts, discussion with that?
Sure, we just had a discussion, I will put some words to that, giving both students and staff a break between that and start of school. I don't know why we would start a little early. I understand that we only come back, we come in for two full days, and then we're into the freaking week tomorrow, but then we have a four-day week, so. I just want to understand a lot, why we want to start it.
Well, like you said, I mean, if he's going out from his history in Illinois, it's two more days to a day set for standardized testing. I mean, which is the point, I did, I mean, that makes sense, just, you know, um, but, yeah, I don't, I can go either way, because, um, two days is two days. I don't, I don't know how much two days can really help, but it does get the whole, um, it's a fun newness part out, and then you can skip it and get the work. I don't know, I don't know.
Yet, there does seem to be some momentum in the state for ever and ever. There's, it was, you were not gonna start before Labor Day, and then they ended up pushing it to, okay, you're not gonna start before September first. Um, and I'm old, so when I started working in Wisconsin, you know, we did start in August twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, back to those days. Um, what I think will happen is if if they do, and there's Alberti Darling, who's a Republican state legislator, has has put forward, you know, um, a bill to potentially look at, again, moving, allowing districts to start before then September first. I think what you'll see is kind of over the course of time, I think you'll see what happened in Illinois, happened in Wisconsin, where districts will want to get a couple more days, and a couple more days, and pretty soon you're gray as lake, and you're starting off, be August first. Which, you know, they're, they're getting out by May twenty.
Well, yeah, I know, in my experience, when they don't want to work, oh, oh my goodness, we can't work past Memorial Day.
Yeah, yeah.
That's unacceptable, so it's just a shift of the.
It's like, it's exactly, exactly. Um, so just always, uh, bring it up for discussion and and, um, nothing more than that. No one in our area, including the high school, is not looking at doing anything with that at this time, that I'm aware of. Now, we get surprised on stuff like four K, uh, but you know, but, uh, but at this point, there's no other districts in our area.
For planning purposes, what?
You know, if if we were going to do something, I think, you know, we'd probably want to do something by the end of May, you know, before school is out, to get people ahead of that. Um, we do, we, our in-service days are the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the week before.
And the thirtieth for the next month.
Correct.
That'll wait until the first. Seventy-two days, and then be an operation, I mean, that more than a week.
My question is to Andrew, do you see any academic advantage for any of the age groups to start early?
I.
Like seventh and eighth grade, or?
I.
Three K is.
My opinion is so, and I don't shoot you up. To me, and I think there would be way more academic happening as to be at the other year. I feel it is so sporadic at the beginning of the year. We always are waiting for the first, because you really, especially with our little guys, it's so much of building routine. Like you, you don't even hit the ground running with academics. So the more, to me, that we can build at the beginning of the year, then you're hitting those routines, boom, 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 at the end of August, and you're hitting September running. Right now, we're not hitting running until the middle of September, when you're trying to build all these routines. And then you look at the end of the year, we we always joke, after Memorial Day, it's field day, it's, it's field trip, it's camp, it's, you know, and I just feel like, and this is, I don't mean to sound negative, but really the amount of true new learning that's going on after Memorial Day.
Right.
Is not happening, because we've math tests, we've forward tests, and then grades are due, you know, there's just so much that I just, I feel the benefit of August way more than June. I mean, it really is like fun activities to fit in in summer year, which you'd still have to fit in, but you look at the end of the year, you have Memorial Day, and if you did your fun activities there and you were gone, because you, and you come back in June, and you're here for three days, then, you know, it's just, and then we do have, you know, you start to look at November and December, and they're so split out that when you're starting in September, and we have tests. And it's like the amount of true instruction you get, you get less and less when that first moves down and will make that Labor Day.
Okay, so would if you had the dates to start a couple days earlier? And then you would have, at the very least, you would have additional in-service time that you could utilize? You say three, two and a half hour blocks per day, so that could open up six two and a half hour blocks. I I realize compensation would have potentially come into play, teachers are expected to be here, but.
But if you took, not really, because if you moved, so our in-service services are still twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, right, so that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and you have all Thursday, Friday, if we start school that next Monday, it's adding, so that'd be the thirtieth, thirty-first, we could take days off in June, so that he wouldn't even, you don't have to.
Right, I'm I'm just saying, you would have those extra days, you could either do for that, or I see, you're just saying, take it off the end.
Or take it, yeah, or, or, yeah, I don't know.
We're not gonna have those days next year for in-service for third trimester, right? This year, we struggled some things to change it around, and we had enough.
Oh, oh, you had enough.
That what you did, like at least one to two a month?
Yeah, we still did, did I, I put the calendar. You look, we still kept with those chapters, so we would still have, our PD would look exactly like what it did prior to the COVID years.
Right, so is there any, now that you've been exposed to with the situation that COVID has presented and having the extra in-service days, is there an advantage to that, that, you know, adding two year, two days onto the beginning of the school year would allow you to do that later in the school year, to do the more in-service days?
Two, two, two days to start the year would give you six more early release crap. It's kind of, you still have to then have to worry about the, running for contractual day.
Correct, we have to go with that, that's why I did the same. Right.
You can work something out for April. You just kind of take a look to see what it'll look like, take a look at what that cost might look like, take a look at what that calendar might look like with with some adjustments for that?
We have some extra COVID dollars to spend just for that kind of thing. My concern is getting the teachers enough prep time and giving the kids the best chance in the fall to succeed.
Would you go with it, uh, William and go back and what they look like?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Seven point two, new policy updates.
Uh, we've got, the policies are ready to review, but the board often likes to do a, um, look at, have just a policy night, where we can just dive in and look at those items. Um, look at, um, is that, how's our availability mid-April? We would be interested possibly finding a date for me to do that on a Monday or a Wednesday or something like that, or?
Like, like the week of April fall?
That should work for me.
Monday? Uh, when do we want to start?
Like at six P M.
Everybody make a start, yeah. Bert, can you make a six P M on the fall? Yes, but yeah. All right, let's go for it.
If the nice thing is that there are, there are less policy updates than have been in the last couple. Um, there are a couple of interesting little updates that that I, you know. That that's different, yeah. Um, which would be good to talk about.
We'll do that on April twelve, which is Monday at six P M. Bring it, uh, seven point three, employee insurance rules and review.
So we're, we're at employee, uh, we'll have our renewal rates for health insurance and dental insurance. Uh, we should get those next week, Monday or Tuesday, in terms of kind of where those numbers are are looking. Um, Sue and I have been talking to the, uh, life insurance people, LTD people, S T, S, uh, short-term disability people. Um, just going over the, um, double checking on language, making sure it matches up with with what our handbook languages. Uh, one of the tasks they got us do is rather than having a say, support staff, they asked us to come up with a listing of job titles to include as a part of that. Um, it's been a while since we've talked about those, um, those, um, employee benefit items. Yeah, we'd like to get a group together to to talk about that, and wanted to see if there was interest in doing that. Um, so just kind of go over it, do a review, see where we're at, um.
Four K M?
Yeah.
Could we allow established, we do it in charge?
Sure, right, uh, sure.
They might want to.
Yeah.
Yep. Good deal. Anybody else?
Well, I, oh, sorry, I thought you, he said Mike.
I'm sorry, no, I'm at Dave, I'm sorry.
Okay. I thought you said Dave and Mike.
Yeah, that's, that's Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Mike.
He said Dave and Mike, so I'm like, we don't need the whole board on it, so, no, I would, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so Mike, Cheryl, and Dave will be on that today.
Just Charlie.
Yeah, you can say Mike, oh my goodness.
I I like volunteering.
I'm like, we don't need the whole board on it, so I'm like, and then I have to wait in turn, I think you're being.
I promise, I'm not necessarily. Okay. Do you want to set up a meeting?
Yep, I'll set up a meeting and, uh, let's take a look at some data. Um, next on a four K program.
Yeah, four K program, seven point four.
So we've been talking, there's been some discussion over about the last four years of school districts that are interested in converting their four K programs to all-day programs. And the frustration of school districts has been that, well, they could do five days a week, but the, but the most that you could ever have each of those students count is point six F T D. Um, which, and and again, in a larger district where they're perhaps running, you know, three different models of a, uh, four K program, they were, it was very frustrating for them, and it felt like if to offer it, it was costing them money. Um, so Governor Evers has put in this budget, last time, nothing came of it. Um, he's put it in the budget this time, and, um, one of the things that we've talked about is, is as soon as a district or two starts looking at, um, moving to an all-day four K program, it it kind of shakes up the apple cart a little bit in terms of all the other four K programs in the other area schools. So Salem has approved for next year, an all-day four K program where it was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, all day. It's an option, so they'll have another option that'll be available for half-day programs. We Win is gonna do something similar, they have a meeting coming up on Wednesday. Um, so I don't know for sure what theirs is gonna look like, but from what I understand, they're, they're gonna offer some sort of an all-day option as well. There is no guarantee at this point that the governor's proposal will be approved, uh, by the state legislature. So by doing so for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, you may very well, they may very well be offering a program where the students are there four or five days. Um, but they're only being treated like they're there three days for state aid purposes. So it, it is a, um, it, it's kind of a, it does a couple of things, it's an offering that's different for parents that are interested in doing something along those lines. Um, it's kind of anticipation of what's coming up, uh, what the discussion has been at the state level. Um, it is a challenge for a district our size in comparison to a, a district Salem's size. So Salem would have, have perhaps ninety students that are in a four K program. And in terms of the number of teachers that are in their program, they may very well be able to, um, divide that up between two FTEs in terms of kind of how they're gonna set that up. In our case, our four K programs tend to run the thirty-five, thirty-seven range. Um, so depending on how those numbers kind of worked out, it would, um, we'd be in a situation where it'd be really hard to do with, with one FTE teacher. Uh, we might very well end up having to do it with an additional half of a teacher or something along those lines. There's potentially some costs, we would save fourteen thousand dollars in, in busing for midday bus runs. Um, but not as much as what a, you know, an additional staff company would, would, uh, what they're doing. Andrea and I have been talking a bit about it, and I think the first thing we would want to check would be to see if there's interest. Um, and, and, uh, we'll from there and give you some survey, Andrea, I don't know what your thought?
Yeah, I mean, I'm more than happy to send out a survey. I, I said I'd be shocked if we don't have thirty people that would like to have that out of our thirty-two. Um, but there's definitely things you have to consider because now they're here all, all day. Are they going to specials, they're eating lunch, they're eating breakfast, um, are they, are they napping? You know, that's a whole other, having them here all day, thinking of all of those scenarios. Because it's gonna be five days, it's gonna be four days, and so, um, we have thirty-two, are you gonna have one teacher with thirty-two four Kers all day? Probably not, so now you're looking at hiring two four K teachers if you have that. For the, so, uh, I, I'd be happy to send out a survey if you'd like.
I would agree.
Obviously, to your point, you probably know how the messages are gonna come back. So we could see it, if other districts are going to open up full-time four K, how many are we gonna open them up?
Exactly.
If it goes to one day, you know, are those thirty-two gonna come fifteen or eighteen because the parents really want the kids?
Yeah.
The only reason we haven't up until now is because we did point six.
Point six.
Right, if it does go up to one, then, or even, we need five, if it's more, again, head start for those kids.
And, and that open enrollment piece is, it's a huge piece to do.
Right.
Yeah.
I know some people call that, you know, daycare basically, but I know with the, having a licensed teacher in front of them, that's, it's, it's not daycare.
If it's wrong, if anything, go ahead and ask Andrew to do a survey. Come back for us in April, please. All right, thank you for that. Uh, seven point five, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two kids club contract.
So we have had kids club in the building for, for many years, they used to be just down the, the road. Um, prior to my being here, they ended up moving up here and working in the building. It, it's become very much, uh, the largest, um, daycare provider in town, uh, for that before and after school time. Uh, there are a few kids that are there during the middle of the day, four K students that are there during the, the course of the middle of the day. Um, it is, we did not charge rent until, I believe it was twenty seventeen. Uh, we, we have charged during the summer, I believe it was, um, and I've got this year, and I've used twenty dollars a day, we're doing during the summertime, and then three, fifty a month.
Three hundred.
Three hundred a month during the course of the, um, during the course of the school year. Um, the districts primarily, you know, it's kind of, both of us have not ever created a formal contract, uh, because it's not the district that's, that's paying, um, paying kids club, it's, it's, you know, they're charging the, the, the parents for those daycare costs. Um, but, um, Trevor Womack has worked up one, uh, worked up a contract that, um, I put in the board packet to take a look at. Um, we're at the time of year where we revisit the, uh, what we're charging for rent. Um, is it something that we'd want to revisit at this time? Is it something that, um, we, we'd like to take some interest in or, or, um, continue on in, in kind of the same way that we have?
Is the center for profit organization, the kids club?
Yes, yes.
That's why we wanted to reach one, because it went from YMCA, I believe, to kids club. When it was YMCA, that's not for profit.
Yeah, right, well, the other, the other thing is we did have a contract that's going to charge them, because our, the theory was, we don't charge them, they don't pass those costs along to our, your. Um, so that was helping the community, Ellen. Um, but since we are charging them, I think we are at the point where we need a contract with them, at least from a liability perspective. We've been like so far.
Oh, we've never had a.
We don't have, we never had a formal contract, I think we need one. Um, I'd like to take a stab at writing it, might give you a few to run past our legal top vote, who are not paying perjury. And we've got the bat near.
You said Trevor Womack had one?
They could create, they just created one. Definitely four K.
Right.
Well, there's, there's a, pretty much a boilerplate contract.
So if you like the whole harmless or, uh, they're part of our insurance, if they're, they're students of the school or?
Um, you know, damage, you know, care of the building, um, you know, they're a separate entity, they're, they're an outside facility use, you know, as an organization, so.
Yeah, I talked about maintenance, I talked about destruction of our property, there's a lot of things that are covered in that contract. Insurance is obviously one of them. Obviously, the, whatever you charge them within that, to talk about charge, to talk about how, what hours are they allowed to be in, things like that.
Um, just to help elu-, uh, eliminate any type of pushback in April that we can hopefully approve it. The only concern I have, I, I would, I have to tell you, I was running out of steam by the time I got this, of reading all of the packets. But the one concern I have, um, as far as when there isn't school, as far as these two kids clubs go, I know you said mostly we just have before and after, but in the contract, make sure they include something as far as when on snow days or what have you. Or even, for example, on, we have it coming up here, Good Friday, I mean, they still allow, I mean, parents still need daycare possibly. So how to handle non-school attendance days? Because I know we've struggled that with in our district. Do you need a pen? Yeah, so I know we've struggled that with in our district, with our, our daycare, our staff, daycare, and how to handle non-school attendance days.
Yep, but we've been doing this for sixteen years. Having, having a kids club type of organization.
Sure.
My kids were in one of the first groups, if not the first group, but what's changed?
We live in a little bit of a society, and I think people that, uh.
Okay, but that doesn't have anything to do with the, on the, the other days, the Good Fridays, the whatever, as far as I knew, those were, it was open during that time.
I'm just saying to include that in, we're just trying to protect ourselves.
The scope of the contract.
So with any contracts, those type of things, so that later you can avoid a whole bunch of, oh, well, what does this mean?
Yeah. Typically, what's, what they've done is, yeah, if there's a snow day, they don't have school. Um, yeah, yeah, we're off of school, over the breaks, they, they tend to take between us, Salem, and Trevor Womack and say, okay, how many parents are interested in having daycare, and they'll use one of those facilities.
It's been more of a space rental thing than it has been, otherwise, you know, if they're like a, another classroom.
Right, but it still isn't a housing thing that you have there.
Pretty good.
All right, uh, seven point six, stipends, personal days, and FFCRA lead.
Um, we have, um, first of all, just from a sports side, or a stipend standpoint, we've got, uh, we've, we've got volleyball for both boys and girls in AMV that would be, um, um, and we've got those stipends that are listed in here in terms of what their regular school year stipends would be. What we did last year was if the activity had, had started, if it was taking place, we had paid that stipend. Um, wanted to look at, at going forward with volleyball, with track, with softball, that we go forward with the stipends that would typically be paid for those sports. The other option would be to, to continue with, uh, um, we've been doing timesheets for those activities that didn't fit neatly into one of our activities. So for instance, we've been doing intermural basketball and volleyball, those types of things. Um, I had sketched out, just took a look at volleyball, and it, it was amazing how that twenty-six dollars an hour worked out really close to what that, in this shortened season, what it would kind of end up looking like. But in terms of an approach to those stipends, uh, we also have that on the books coming up as well. Um, are we comfortable going forward with, with those existing stipends that we've used in past years? Um, moving forward that way, or we want to take a look at that hourly?
Would you imagine it to be a year where you?
I'm going to, the full stipend.
Yes, yes, that's, that's his workload.
Just for the sports that are.
Spring sports are activities.
For the spring activities.
Let me just want to, you want to make a note motion right of my.
Uh, sure. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the stipends for the spring sports seasons presented.
Why do the other activity?
Spring activities.
Spring activities. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, five ayes, motion is approved. And then second half.
Uh, we've got summer school for there, it's actually a twenty-one, twenty-two expenditure.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's actually next budget year. Uh, when we do summer school, it's the first thing that happens of the next fiscal year. Um, so we've had Danielle last year, Danielle Dunleavy coordinated that as the, the prep organization for that. Um, would like to recommend that, that we, have Danielle receive a stipend for that again. Could be a bigger, could be a bigger process this year, and there's gonna be a lot more pieces to it, I think.
So the stipend will be based on the number of hours she works, or?
No.
Not weekly time card?
Yeah, the previous year, we did twenty-five hundred dollars.
I make a motion, we approve the summer school coordinator's stipend in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
For twenty-one, twenty-two?
Oh, so the twenty-one, twenty-two, well, it will be a twenty-one, twenty-two expenditure.
All right. Do we want to need Danielle for that?
Yeah.
He didn't. He haven't.
Yeah, you, you really just need to approve the stipend.
I'll second that one. Mike seconds that, all votes in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, five ayes, motion is approved.
Okay, um, we had, um, earlier this year, we had, again, we did some talk back, and it would have been November and December, about the possibility of looking at other stipends, uh, talked a bit about personal days and unused personal days.
Can I just stop here real quick, before we get onto that, there was the, uh, you had a little firm thing about the athletic director?
Yeah, so for the athletic director piece, we did, we did sports for the second half of the year. Um, there's not scheduling or anything that go along with that, so recommendation would be that, that we would do a half a season for that.
Have to be devil's advocate, since you didn't schedule, would it be, would that person live together, would it be a third? I don't know, a third of the two sports season, and I was split ears on that. Well, it's already. Athletic director also participating in that with. Conference?
Wouldn't they have their meetings for all the year?
Yeah.
And did they have any?
Um.
You said they did a planning.
I, I don't, I don't know if they had any of those meetings, we could hold off, I could find out the answer to that.
I don't, I, I don't know if there's any more discussion, I make a motion, we approve the, uh, athletic director stipend. Um, at the fifty percent, which would be for of the, of the past stipend amount, I don't know. For, for the twenty, twenty-one stipend. Sorry, I was worded really bad, I apologize.
I'll second that. All votes in favor?
Aye.
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 Five ayes, motion is approved.
Yeah, um, we had talked, earlier this year, we talked about the possibility of, of having a, a reimbursement for unused personal days. Uh, there was talk about potentially looking at a stipend. Um, we also have talked previously about FFCRA days. Um, and again, when, it, it went from being a mandated offering as of twelve thirty-one, as of January one, um, it definitely became an optional, uh, item where, uh, current district lead would use for that. Um, bring those items up, um, Marlene and Jenny had written something up, I, I put that in the, uh, the packet. Um, any discussion at this point? Um,
There are three things that, uh, they've put in for. One was, uh, well, actually, two different stipends of the same amount. Uh, for the after-work part of the care for the quarantined original student. There was the, uh, uh, changing personally policies with personal days that are not being paid out at the current sub-grads rollover to sick days. And then there was the FFCRA, uh, request to extension for that. Um, I think these want to start with is number two, because we had talked about, uh, earlier in the year, letting them roll personal days or pay it out. It made sense to us, the district, to have district staff here, then trying to find substitutes that weren't qualified during the time which looked into very red. So, probably think before the time that we. The cabinet's on that request.
Well, I still feel like I'm a bit new to the form of the district that, so I'm taking it, I couldn't find employee handbook in regards to the personal days. And just, so I'm assuming, you know, I have to assume that they're copying word for word here. Um, I guess then that's true what they're asking, because that's what it already says. You know, you may carry, if I'm reading you right, you know, these, you know, eleven oh one says that, you know, you may carry over up to three unused personal days, be added towards their sixties. And then it says if there are other maximums, what, then they can be paid out.
That is not an athlete, so there's, there's no rollover of, of personal days, those days, uh, all we have to get to.
Yeah, so what is this copy from employee handbook section eleven, eleven, that's over one?
It's, it's not in our hand.
Yeah, because I was told usually. I'm sorry, like, it's proposed change. Doesn't have your original wording, it would have the, the proposed change.
I thought we were, well. I thought we were, well, we were talking about a one-time deal for that.
Right, and that's what we're asking. We can add the year and. Yeah, that, I don't know, we just have to, it has to be an agenda, not, I think a one-time thing, one that has to be like an agenda or one-time thing, not actually.
I don't think it would have to be a, a handbook change at all. Make the motion, it's a one-year, one-year deal for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I don't think we want to.
The question would be, who's our client for support staff? The applying for, district staff?
I personally think it would apply to everybody. Who's a challenge here and, again, it boils back to what's easy. It's easier to have our own staff here if they just need to take those days and we're going to try and find the staff that is going to.
It would have to be fair. Can't pick a reason, it would have to be everyone.
Yeah.
As, as, as mentioned at previous meetings, that there's not one staff member that was more important than the other than another.
So this will be extra days into the next year, or we're going to? Pay that off?
Well, as.
For each unused.
As is proposed, this, I mean, this is just an idea, granted, it won't be written in the handbook, but we could give them the option of. So, okay, let me clarify that before I go further, you say, does everyone get three?
I'm going to say should there's not.
I would propose you just, if, if they already hit the maximum, you allow them to go up to those three days below their max.
But then, then. Then that's for tracking purposes, for student standpoint, as far as going fast to the logistics nightmare.
Right.
Like, why does, why does John Smith have two hundred and fifty-three when everyone else is capped out at two fifty? Oh, yeah, back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, there is fast to the logistics nightmare, no way.
This one, what are your proposals?
Well, I'm just saying that if, if, if they reach the max, the six week accumulation or maximum, then yes, they could be paid out. So we have to decide that. I'm just trying to clarify, I, it wouldn't be more than three? I mean. So do they only get three, and if they have three left, three or less left, then, this is a can of worms. There's so many, there's so many possibilities you could get in here. Yeah, this is, this is what I struggle with every day, so.
So what if we came at the end of the year? And you evaluate each employee, and if they eat up those three days?
For the, yes.
They eat up less than that three days, and we just have to say, according to the number of days.
But then you compensate their daily rate, you compensate their sub rate, the current sub rate.
Well, right now, if they use it, it's their daily rate. Right? If they use a day.
Yeah.
Compared thing would be to pay them for the proceeding.
But then you're, you know.
And then it would be clear at the end of the school year. It wouldn't carry into, like you said, the logistical nightmare of.
Yeah.
Trying to, I, I agree, that's what was my concern as well. Is going forward, those up to three extra days added to the maximum, or what if somebody hasn't gotten to the maximum yet? They drop. There's a couple get to the maximum and they aren't thinking about it. Potentially in a future year when they used up the three, you know, the, it added the three days just earlier.
So to simplify, would it make sense to? Just pay out up to those three days of unused, uh, three unused days at the current per day rate?
That's correct.
You just, there's no option, it's just going to be a payout.
What I, I would want to.
Yes, then you get into the point of just because, I mean, I can pick on Mike here, because, you know, he was COVID, or he had to quarantine for a while, like, because of a couple of meeting events. Does he get penalized because he backed up his personal time? Then he doesn't get.
It's not a penalty, that, you want everyone to use their time.
But then.
But if they didn't because of COVID, then we can, we can reason that, that they, they deserve that money, this case.
That they need to work.
So what I, what I would suggest is let me cost it. Yeah, I'm going to bring that back. And I could bring that back in April, I could bring it back when we do our evidence and agenda item to our.
Well, that's.
Danielle, you talked about.
Exactly.
We kind of know what it's called.
Yeah, so I.
That's what it was like when I turned nine.
I think you said that, yep, maybe for sure, that was the sub rate.
Yeah.
That's what I, yeah, I'm, I'm not, that's what I'm guessing it was, was, well then, now you're looking at somebody who took the day. Was actually paid more because they took the day and they got the per day and the per day rate. Right, for raw. As opposed to somebody who stayed here is only.
So why don't we table this one from like April, let John talk about. Okay. Maybe a little more.
Yes, since I was.
Right.
End of our next meeting.
Wait, you, you thought that was the easy one, you still threw up.
Why, why are you doing that, it's got to cost off number one then too.
And who, and how do we qualify that, is that five hundred, or it's the way it's worded, is it five hundred per staff, or is it a thousand per staff? Or is it either or, do they get five hundred, or did they get a thousand?
We can have them cost off five hundred and a thousand to see what it looks like. Anything in between, we can extrapolate.
Yeah. All right. So Don, you, you're, you're going to have some fun in April.
This is actually the counter. Pounce it out to Cheryl. Cheryl, this is what I think.
And number three?
I don't know, I don't know what the impact is.
Three is, we already said no, so I can be so. Sorry.
I'm sorry, my, what's that?
It's extending the crap, well, sorry, at our district, we call it trapback. So F F, F F C R A. I, it, it ended December thirty first, two thousand twenty. It became, when we, I think when we voted on it, they had, but since our last time we voted on it, it's a volunteer or optional. For employees, employers with five hundred, yeah, members are last, but I mean, that's where you're getting. I mean, you could get, you know, cross at your teeth, dotting your i's, as far as, those are, that's more of the, the private sector, is that? For public, you know?
I have a comment. If we take the last, we already said no, could be a general problem here.
Yeah, I, I have to look.
It was believable. It was pre-plenty. Doing that, great.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's all the optional, it's all at a cost of the, the employer.
Private sector could, could see it tax.
Credit.
Credit. Uh, we, we did not.
Any, any motion? While we just start table, table the topic, move on. Take it out then, now. I will table table. Our next meeting is April twenty-sixth at seven P M. Uh, we have another meeting on April twelfth at six P M. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
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 Five ayes, motion is approved.
Can I apologize to anyone in the audience that I forgot to wear my mask, Mike? Edit my pocket.